Good evening. Welcome to our Montgomery ISD Town Hall meeting. My name is Heath Morrison. I am the superintendent. Really appreciative of those of you that had came out tonight trafficking the cold and the rain. We also have some folks that maybe join us virtually, and so we're periodically try to look over at the screen too, but we're trying to not turn our back on anyone. But we're looking forward to the opportunity to share some things that are happening in our school district. As I've been saying consistently, it is an unprecedented year, not just for Montgomery ISD, but for every school district in the state, every school district across the country. And so we're trying to meet those challenges and serve your children. And these sort of opportunities with these town halls give us an opportunity to hear from you, what you think we're doing well, what you think we can do better. And I promise you, whether we're serving your child currently in in-person traditional instruction, or we're serving your child remotely, our goal and our hope or desire is to serve your child well. And you're not going to hurt our feelings if you think we can do better. The only way we're know is to hear from you, which is the purpose of the town hall. Want to acknowledge I have my team of leaders up here, and they're introducing themselves as they get ready to speak. I also have one of our board of trustees here, Mr. Adam Simmons. Adams, thank you for being here this evening as well. And so what we're going to do is give you some very brief information. Some of this we presented at our October Board Meeting, but we've updated it just to give you the most recent information. But we're going to be very short on any sort of presentation so we can spend this hour getting ideas, suggestions, questions from you. And again, just if we're looking over here periodically, because I don't know if we have anyone joining us remotely, and we want to try to make sure we're being good presenters for both the audience that's in person, as well as those who are serving remotely, like our teachers, right? So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Amy Busby, and she can give you a snapshot of what's happening right now in Montgomery ISD. At our last board meeting, a lot happened. Our board passed pay raises for employees, which were desperately needed and very important. But then they also had an opportunity for us to share what's going on in terms of how we're serving students remotely and in person, how many, and how that's changed. And then some guidelines that we are trying to implement to really improve the instructional program for both our students in person and remotely. So we'll be able to then present that information and answer any questions you may have, or take any suggestions or ideas. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Busby.
Thank you. And the last I checked, just before getting up here, it looks like we had 24, oh, now 32 participants. And I know they're having a hard time hearing, so I'm going to try to stand closer, just in case that this helps with the sound there, too. Quick overview on the slideshow up here that you can see, we wanted to review the COVID tracker. That is one of the tools that we put on our district website, so that you can see the current state of what's going on in the district. So these are current numbers that are currently, it has it in two different areas, students that are either quarantined or are positive, and then also staff that are either quarantined or positive. Now quarantine could be that they were feeling ill and having symptoms, or it could be that they were exposed to a positive. So they could be quarantined for either of those reasons. We try to update that as quickly as possible. The chain of information goes to the campus, usually hears from the teacher or the student first. They communicate then on campus with the nurse and all of that information, trying to figure out the best way to get that communication then out to parents and the rest of the campus. That is put on a spreadsheet for the COVID Rapid Response Team. And then from there, we have someone who then inputs the data so that it can go on the website. So there is a little bit of a chain to get that updated. So it could be 24 to 48 hours kind of behind what our current situation is. Next thing on here, the COVID Rapid Response Team. This is a team of administrators, a leadership team, and we also have some nurses and different department heads and things like that that are on it as well, too. But our main team meets on a daily basis to review the different cases and state of the district and how things are going. And this team will also review all cases to make sure that we're making the best decisions and that we are making the proper communication. And we also review staff situations. Staff can also request, do work requests, so that if they are in a situation where they can work remotely, we can also consider that as well. The last thing on here, current students that are choosing remote learning. So our current situation is that we have 11.8% that are choosing to do remote learning. And that breaks down to 298 students at the elementary level and 755 students at the secondary level. Now, these are the numbers of those that chose remote learning. Now, it continues to fluctuate because depending on if they are quarantined or positive, then they will switch to remote during that time. So that number fluctuates based on those needs.
All right, Ms. Graves.
Hi, I'm Wendy Graves. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education. Montgomery ISD has always had great pride in their instructional program. We have very high standards. We have always had a very rigorous curriculum for our students, and we have done a great job with our students. We want to offer that same curriculum to our remote learners. So we have expectations in place for our remote learners, but we wanted to put those expectations in writing for our parents, our teachers, and our students, so that we are all on the same page. Those expectations are as follows. Our students will participate daily to show progress, utilize a designated platform by the teachers to submit their work, complete independent work independently, complete tests within a designated timeframe, and seek teacher support if they are struggling in class. Those are the expectations that we have set for our students. Our parents will respond to communication from the school within 24 hours, ensure students have a designated workspace and required technology to complete their work, seek teacher support if the student is struggling in class, and notify the teacher or the teachers, as well as the attendance office when the student is absent. The teachers' expectations will respond to the student and parent communication within 24 hours, be available for academic support during the school hours, monitor the progress of the remote learners, offer additional support tutoring if the student is struggling in class. We had these expectations in place, but sometimes they just need to be put in writing. And so we have now set these in writing so that we're all on the same page and we're following the same expectations as we move forward. Extracurricular activities. As we work through the challenges of COVID and contact tracing and the challenges that that brings, it's difficult for us to reconcile how students can participate in community and school activities that lend themselves to close contact but not participate in in-person instruction. So for the second semester, students, remote students planning to continue with MISD extracurricular activities for next semester will need to return to in-person instruction in order to continue with those activities. MISD activities that can be done remotely will not be impacted. So in other words, if you're participating in an extracurricular activity that can be done remotely, for instance, National Honor Society, that you can participate remotely, you can continue with that extracurricular activity as a remote student. For any family with unique needs continuing to ask for this consideration, will please indicate this during the application of intent, which we will talk about momentarily. Current arrangements of students who are participating in extracurricular activities and that are remote will be honored through the end of this semester. Application of intent. As we look forward to the spring semester, we need to plan for students who will be our remote students. We are going to ask that all students wanting to be remote students complete an application of intent starting Monday. That application will be open Monday through November 13th. That application will be on the MISD website, and those will be reviewed by our COVID committee. Parents will be asked to commit to remote or in-person instruction for the entire spring semester. That way, we can plan appropriately for those students. Considerations for approval will include current grades and participation and academic progress from the fall semester. If the application is denied, a conference with the parent will be scheduled.
I can meet you halfway.
Oh, you need me to stand close, okay. Sorry, I missed that. I'm Dwayne McFadden. Yes, sir.
One of the last ones. It's easy to say that now, but whatever, over Christmas, this so-called winter, that point, what's your plan for that as of April, January, or whatever time it's going to be?
When?
There'll be a few, I guess, then.
Okay, say that again, I'm sorry.
If we have this winter impact with COVID-19.
Sure.
Oh, yes, sir.
What's your plan if on the day of the?
It's always in flux.
Wendy, I got that. So I'm going to start an answer, and I'm going to look over at my team, because I hope we're going to have the same response. Every plan that we put forward is subject
To change.
To change. And we don't say that facetiously or with sarcasm. This is unprecedented. And so every day, we come, we look at the variables, we look at the data, we talk to our public, we listen to our parents, our students, our teachers, our administrators, and we make the best plans that we can come up with. And then either TEA, our Texas Education Agency, the CDC, or some agency health department puts new information or variables. And as I've shared the story, there was one of our first board meetings where we were getting ready to present to the board our back-to-school plan. And we were literally two hours before the meeting, where we'd worked for days on getting the presentation really, really at excellent level for our board, and we had a commissioner call with Commissioner Marath of TEA, and he was giving us new information, and we were changing the slides in real time because everything was changing. So we are going to be very focused on changing health conditions. We're going to be very focused on new guidelines. We're going to be very focused, obviously, on policy requirements and legal requirements coming from various agencies that we have to report to. And we're going to be very responsive to our community. And if there are things that we need to change, so for example, if you had indicated that you were going to do in-person traditional instruction, but something's changed within your family, there are health reasons why you need reconsideration, we're always going to consider that. The application of intent is really to help us plan the best as we can for both our in-person and remote learners. So we will definitely be very focused on any change in conditions that may occur in January, in March, in May. I think this is just going to be a continuing situation.
You also be committed, the number of cases in class is amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, this district has done a wonderful job, and I'm not being negative at all. What I hate to see is a letter of parents march for January 15th saying, well, because it is unforeseen, whatever, we're going to be, you know, hopping around before we proceed to figure out what to do. I hope you work on planning for a failure of the medical system and the lives of COVID.
Yeah, and I'm going to repeat what you're saying, only because I was doing that before you even told me. Is that what you're going to tell me? Very good, all right. Because I have to repeat what you're saying so that our remote audience can hear as well. And so the hope was, first of all, accommodation for how we've handled this situation so far. And like you, sir, and I should have mentioned this as well, I'm really proud of our employees, our administrators, our district, our community, our parents, and our students. We have, I believe it's one of the highest percentages of students who have chosen to come back for in-person instruction in the state of Texas. You know, as you saw, we're right around, on any given day, 88% of our students are back in person. And we've had one of the lowest percentages of having to quarantine students, either because they've contracted or faculty contracted COVID-19 or been around close contact. Knock on wood. But that takes constant vigilance. It takes really taking the guidance that we get from CDC, TEA, other entities, the health department, very seriously. And it really takes an amazingly supportive community. And there are things that we have all been decided that are best practice, that we've been directed to do, the hand washing, the social distancing, the masks, and that our community may not always necessarily agree with every aspect of it, but that they respect it. And let me tell you, our students have been phenomenal. I mean phenomenal. I walk into our campuses where, you know, from fourth grade to 12th grade, the masks are required, and I have yet to see a student not wearing it. And if anytime their mask has fallen off, they immediately apologize and they're putting it back on. And so it's just a different way we've had to work on this, but it's a challenge that we face this year. Again, what you're saying, we are absolutely focused on things can change, conditions can change, new requirements can change, and that's why we say our plan is subject to change, not because we're trying to constantly inundate you with memos, emails, to interrupt your... Every time we're making these decisions, the health of your child is the first thing that we think about. Then we think about what's the best way to educate your child. And then we do think about how, you know, how do we not inconvenience our families? We recognize work needs. We recognize technology challenges within our district or within the homes of the families we're serving. So we realize that there's an impact of what we're doing on your family situation, and we try to take all of that into consideration. Yes, ma'am?
If I'm reading correctly, I have to make a decision by November 13th, what I'm going to do for spring semester?
It's a letter of intent. And so it's what, right now, on November the 13th of you, it's kind of like voting, right? You have until the deadline, and then you've got to vote. Unlike voting, though, we're going to let you come back to us if a condition changes. And it's really only if you're going to continue to choose remote. If you're in-person traditional instruction and you're going to continue in that, you actually don't need to fill out any of this. But if you are currently on remote and want to continue on remote, or if you're currently in-person traditional instruction and you want to switch to remote, then we would ask you to fill out the application of intent. We would then be able to get a better sense of how many families are choosing to stay remote or go to remote. But again, if situations change and you want to, if you're choosing remote, but you want to come back for in-person traditional instruction, we want to try to accommodate that. What's a little harder is when families have chosen in-person traditional instruction and then want to choose remote. And it's not that we don't want to accommodate that, it's just we want to make that remote experience as best as we can make it. And so, for example, at the elementary level, we have 14 teachers who across the district are serving all of our remote learners. And so we need to know, how many teachers are we going to need second semester so that we're continuing to be able to have those teachers teach only remote? Or they might choose a hybrid schedule, but that's their choice. But that puts them in the best position to educate your child well, hopefully gives your child the best education possible, and then, you know, doesn't overburden our other teachers who are teaching traditional in-person. So the more information we have early, the better we can plan. But we do recognize that your situations may change, health conditions may change, which is why this is a letter of intent. It's not, you know, forever and never to be modified or amended. So we have one last slide. I promise, we said we're going to be very short on presentation. That's the aforementioned Mr. McFadden. Mr. McFadden, stand close so the nice, great people at home can hear you.
Okay, one more time. My name is Dwayne McFadden. I'm Secondary Instruction, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Instruction. As we have been touring, and my slide is going to be on late arrival, and I want to give you a little background on how we come up with this. As we were traveling around the district with each campus, meeting with teachers, the one thing overall that they've been asking for is time. In the secondary, he alluded, in elementary, we're able to move, you know, first grade curriculum's first grade curriculum, fourth grade curriculum's fourth grade curriculum. But when you get into the high school and the junior highs, depending on what elective they've chosen, it's impossible to dedicate teachers to only do every schedule that a kid has. And so teachers are in a hybrid model at this point, meaning they could have 20 kids in their class that are in person and five kids in that class that are at home. So they're having to adjust for both those models. They have no additional time built into their schedules to handle the additional hybrid. There's no remote period for them to work with remote students, like there is a dedicated remote teacher. And so we feel like we need to think outside the box. And so in 25 years, I've been in the district 25 years, I would have never thought we would come up with late arrival. So we're truly thinking outside the box, and the feedback so far has been very positive from parents. We understand it could be an inconvenience for some of our parents. We are still running buses for 6th through 12th, but it's been positive, and we're really trying to get additional collaboration time for our teachers and time for them that's dedicated to communicate with their remote students and their in-person students. So hopefully, you've already received communication from your child's principal about late arrival Wednesdays for secondary campuses, 6th through 12th only. It's going to start November 4th and end December 9th. That's five Wednesdays, and it is a pilot program. And we're going to start school approximately two and a half hours later, just for secondary, 6th through 12th. Remote learners are being, and I've already said this part, so I'm not going to say it again. We did move to a block schedule, which was also a challenge for teachers, but it was much better for remote learning when we were totally virtual, and we weren't sure if we were going to have to flip back and forth between virtual and remote, depending on our situations and depending on the health conditions. And so block schedule was a new thing for our teachers. They've had to re-gear all of their lessons for 90-minute periods instead of 45-minute periods. They don't have a conference every day, which means they teach, one day they teach four classes in a row from 7:15 in the morning to 2:40 without a break, other than the five minutes the kids get between classes. On the other day, they do get one period off of 90 minutes, and that's mandated by law. We would give them more if we could, and that's what late arrival is hopefully trying to do, give them a couple more hours to work with students. And that was, overall, all teachers said, the one thing we need is more time. So students will have dedicated work assignments, but they're not additional assignments. They'll be continuation, just like any other night. Finish a homework assignment, read a chapter for tomorrow, those kind of assignments. Teachers will be able to use that time collaboratively to plan lessons and make contact with families of both in-person and remote kids. So it's just going to give them an additional block of time.
So, like, I have a sixth grader, so does she need to be remote for those two hours?
Initially, we had planned that as remote instruction, but what we're asking teachers to do is to, if they have homework assignments that would normally go home, we would want them to have them work on those homework assignments during it. The time doesn't, it doesn't have to take place during that 7 to 9:15 environment. They're not having to log into a computer, they're not having to check roll anywhere. It's just additional time to do assignments for the students and for the teachers. We're actually, we actually have enough instructional minutes to absorb that time.
Are you sure you're getting the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm terrible about that. The question was, do they have to do the remote instruction assignments during the 7:15 to 9:15? And the answer is no, they're not going to receive a lot of additional work. It's going to be finished homework from the assignments from the day before. There were two questions, yes?
Right now, Leaky High School has a balloon period every day, and are they doing away with that on Wednesday or Wednesday?
We are only doing away with it on Wednesday. They will continue to have that on Monday, too. And the question was, the balloon periods that we have gone to at the secondary campuses, that's a, on some campuses, it's a reading initiative, on other campuses, it's a study hall type environment. That is not going away on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. It will go away on Wednesday because we're trying to maximize the instructional time.
There was a question.
My question is, I have two at Leaky. And is there, do we have an issue in the district? Like, I see why they can't be doing synchronous learning with the remote learners?
The issue with synchronous learning is, number one, we don't have necessarily the technology backbone to do that 100% of the time. We don't have a lot of the, like, we're doing here, there's not a, we have some classes that are trying to do remote synchronous and that are trying to invite kids in through a Zoom during that class period, but the plan we filled out with TEA was asynchronous plan. And the reason was is because you could only choose synchronous if you could do it in 100% of your classrooms, and we were not at the level that we could do it in 100%. And we didn't have dedicated staff to do it for a full 90 minutes for each period.
Wayne, can you explain the difference between asynchronous and synchronous, just in case?
Sure. Synchronous would be, just like you were sitting inside the class, watching a video of the teacher every minute of the class, and it would have to be equivalent to exactly the number of minutes that an in-person learner would be getting. Asynchronous can have both parts. It can have some synchronous and asynchronous, meaning assignments through CSO at the elementary or Google Classroom, some over recorded lessons. And that's why we don't encourage students to do, to wait until after-school hours to do their assignments, because there's, teachers are only available through their time period. But they can get attendance credit after hours, because we realize that sometimes they're going to watch the recorded lesson later during the day or the recorded activity. So we can give them attendance credit up until 11:59 that night. We would come online and see if they went online and completed their assignments or not.
My other concern with this question is, is, this is not a native procedure, but if I'm making no account time, and that's where those students or their parents, my students are coming home and saying, they're only getting caught for, for a certain time, and then they have free time for the next hour, that they're free to do whatever they want, to catch up on their homework, to be on their phones, to do that other stuff. So what is being done in that period? Is there in those classes for an hour, what, an hour and 52 minutes?
No, hour, a 90-minute period. The question was, in the in-class classroom, if the teacher's not teaching for 90 minutes, should they be teaching for 90 minutes? And if they're using the other time for the remote learners, is that what you're asking?
Are they doing that? I mean, I'm just wondering, if they're leaving more time in their modified and doing a late arrival.
Sure.
What is there needed, there is excess time?
Well, and again, you know, there's a probably, well, and there's a different, you know, I'm not in every classroom. If you have concerns with that, I would definitely direct you to the principal of the school. If it's something that's occurring like as a full-time practice, like they're doing that daily with that, we were, we had built into our asynchronous plan 15 minutes of their period, of their 90-minute period, where they could Zoom with kids or they could make communication. But it shouldn't be half the period. It should not be occurring at that level.
I was just wondering, is the teachers don't have, if they're saying that they don't have a bedtime time, but my children are only being, and I have a ninth grader and an eleventh grader.
Sure.
That both of them are saying, well, it's just my regular mom, and we didn't have what we're doing, and the instructions only for half of the time.
Sure.
The other half, the teachers should be utilizing that for remote learners, or catching at this, and it's going back to the expectations for students, parents, and teachers, is, I will just tell you, I have one in special education, but both of my children have either a ninth grader or a fourth. I feel like the illness is on the student and the parent, but with the kid is struggling, not the teacher. So where is that responsibility for the teacher to joust with us? Because this is mutual, too, from the, and the way that the teachers have set up teaching, whether in line and in different platforms, and it's not on platforms that are typically going to be compared to with our life, is, I can't manage all of that. I'm struggling.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so again, I'm going to try to capture some of what you brought out, and if I missed some of it, correct me. Yeah. So the first thing was, the question was about use of time at the secondary level where we have block schedule, and with an extended amount of time with a block And with an extended amount of time with a block schedule, are the teachers still not being able to accommodate the time that they would need to, to reach out and meet the needs of the remote learners? And then there was another follow-up question to that about, about the, I guess what I would call the instructional effectiveness of the block schedule. And then there was a specific direction around some of our unique learners who might have an IEP or a 504 and that there's a recognition that the parents are struggling, just as our students are struggling in this new world of hybrid learning and remote. And it is more of the focus on the student and the parent than the teacher. Did I capture all that?
You did.
All right, very good. So let me, let me kind of address those as best I can. The first thing is, on research, and this isn't just for instruction, it's just how much time can you directly listen, absorb information coming at you? And research suggests on average about every 17 minutes and then you hit your limit and no matter what is happening, you kind of start turning your brain off. I would suspect research today with our young people is probably not even 17 minutes in this world of social networking that they find themselves in. And I bring that up because the thing about block scheduling, what makes it really, really attractive as an instructional delivery system, is that it gives you time to, for the teacher to teach information, to present information, and then to utilize other methods of instruction, whether it's group settings, whether it's actually independent practice, whether it's research. And so it may look different, but it actually better replicates the work environment where you're not just having someone, where you're not just sitting and getting, but you're getting information then having to process it. Now, this is a new initiative for us in Montgomery ISD and the focus as the district was moving back in the spring to thinking about block instruction was training on how to better utilize it. Well, we didn't have school and so a lot of the training that was going to happen didn't happen. And a lot of the training time that our secondary campuses have had have been how do we better teach in a remote environment? So not making excuses, I think it's just an area we will get better and better and better. And I would suggest that probably your children's experience about this is similar and that is some teachers have adapted exceptionally well to the block schedule. They're thriving, their kids are thriving, and other teachers are having a harder time with it because it's new and they're learning to adjust to it. What's really challenging is that they're adjusting to block scheduling at the same time as they're adjusting to having to do a hybrid schedule. In other words, at the secondary level, I am teaching not only my kids that are right in front of me, but I'm also having to teach my remote students, which is different than the elementary. At the elementary level, for the most part, we have a teacher teaching remote, teachers teaching in-person. So your secondary teachers are learning to navigate the block schedule, having to do in-person and remote, and it's a lot. It is just a lot. And that's where Mr. McFadden was saying, as we were going out saying, you know, what can we do to help? They were saying, I need time. And so the question about, don't they have that time? They really didn't because while your student might be coming home saying, ah, you know, there's all this time for the teacher, they were getting questions from remote learners, a student was coming up with an issue, they were trying to do attendance because there was a cutoff on attendance for that to count. So it was just all coming at them at one time. And so that's why we've been trying to figure out ways to give them some time back. The 32 minutes, it's called different things at the secondary campuses, the two-hour late arrival. I want to emphasize that two-hour late arrival has what's called a pilot. In other words, we want to see if it's going to work. We want to see, does it help our teachers with the time that they're asking for? How do our parents feel about it? How do our students feel about it? If it's working for everyone, we might decide to do more of it the second semester or we might say, hey, look, we said we're going to do it until December 9th and we're going to cut it off at December 9th. The last part about the onus on, more on the parent and the student than the teacher. We started with all of the expectations of the teacher on that, and it actually was like 50 things that we were asking of the teacher and then, you know, four or five really key things for the student and four or five things that we're really asking for the student and the parents. We really just tried to condense what we had on there for the teachers because it's kind of like, what's your job, what's our, my job, what's our job together? So we were really trying to show on those guidelines that there are expectations for all of us. And like anything, you know, we have families and students who are absolutely taking the remote, doing exactly what they should for the right reasons. They're working hard, they're trying to be good students, they're trying to be, it's working and it's working as it was intended. There are some other situations where the teacher is working incredibly hard and they're not getting that back from the student necessarily or the family. So I've sat with teachers who have said, listen, I'm calling my parents, I'm emailing my parents and I haven't heard from them in five or six days and they're trying to be as responsive as they can. So if we're going to have remote, then it just has to be expectations on all of us. It should not feel that it's harder on the parent or the student than it is on the teacher. And if it's feeling that way, we'll work on the communication aspect of that. But the last thing I'll also say is, please let us know what we could do to help you. So for example, when I first became the superintendent back in July and as I was talking to different groups of parents, one of the frustrations I heard over and over and over again is, look, Dr. Morrison, I've got all sorts of platforms and so my kid is logging in one platform, going to another. I can't keep up. I'm not versed in this, they're not particularly versed in it. And so we worked with our teachers, we worked with administrators, and that's where we made a decision. At the elementary, we were going to use CSO as the main platform. At the secondary campuses, we were going to use Google Classroom. Those were things we were trying to do to help support you doing remote as, you know, one of the helps of learning facilitation in your home. If there are other things we can do, we've done training videos for parents, we're trying to be as responsive as we can, but we do that better when we know what the challenge is and we really want to be responsive.
It would be very helpful and if you could get a great book sorted out, because I still can't see anything in it, the notification button, and I can have taken out the book number. If the teachers could scramble all the assignments in there because there's still wireless changes all the time or other things come up, I could want to help kids. Right now, I can log into their individual page to see, but I don't know what's next. A lot of the teacher sites aren't on updated and when my kids are at school, I don't have access to say, Jay does log into the classroom, lets me see what they're doing in biology or what the show I have is going on in 80 seconds. Because I need to know what's going on because I am not playing offensive with my children. I'm playing defensive because I won't, I'm not happy about it. My daughter has a team, but we are disconnected in my special education. So I think when my child, when my children were at Oakdale's, the grade book then, those teachers looked like all their time. And I knew what was coming up, that wasn't usually known for these from that. So I can go back within some of this and encourage people because my dad's exactly what he needs to do. So I think that, I think you're clarifying that the expectations for our remote children versus in-person. I, and so I mistook that. I just thought that was total. But differently, I think this is not related to another typical student in the classroom as far as the onus being on the child and the parent as far as the teacher is concerned with struggling. My daughter doesn't want to struggle. That's correct, the executive. So.
Yeah, a couple of things. So first of all, we have Meredith Berg, who is our Director of Special Education. That's not, that's by design because, you know, it's, we made a decision early on as we were trying to do our phased opening, to bring back as many of our special education students earlier, especially those served on an alternate curriculum because it's just a struggle for all the reasons that you were mentioning. So we still have a number of our students being served on remote. It's our obligation. Whether it was the law or not, it would still be our obligation, our honor, and our focus to serve them well, but it is the law and so we have to make sure that we're doing a good job with that. I can't overemphasize, please communicate directly with your teacher if there's a challenge or a concern that you're having. And if you do not feel that they're being responsive, then please reach out to your campus administrator. And then if you don't feel like they're being responsive, you reach out to Mr. McFadden, Ms. Graves, or myself. You know, we, there's a customer service aspect of this, it's really important and we need to be responsive to you, just as we're asking you to be responsive to the teachers. Part of the issue that you were talking about front-loading the assignments is, again, it's that challenge of, if it was last year when they had the schedule that they had, then they would have their lessons already ready for a seven-period day, they could front-load them. They're actually trying to catch up because they're having to plan for lessons and a block schedule. So again, that's where, you know, you have poor Ms. Graves teaching AP Biology at Montgomery High School and all of her lessons were not for block schedule. She's having to plan ahead, think about what's coming up, design the lessons for block schedule, then load them in. So we've looked at everything like, could we hire people just to load lessons? And we thought, would that be something that would help the teachers and help our parents? But the problem is, is the teachers, as they thought initially, they're like, yeah, that would be great, but then they're like, listen, by the time I actually plan it out and I get it just the way I need it to be, it's just as easy for me to load it in myself. So it comes back to, that's why they need time. Yes, ma'am?
I guess mine's not so much a question, but it's relating to remote learning and also the extracurricular activity piece.
Yes.
My son is a sophomore at Lake Creek High School and, you know, and I was a teacher, a teacher for 15 years and trust me, I, kudos to all the staff out there. I was elementary, so managing 21 is a lot different than 150 or so at the secondary level. So my son's teachers have been great. He falls into an IEP category, blessed with a fabulous co-teach teacher as well as a case manager. My issue comes with the remote learning and the extracurricular. One, I guess, thing that upset me and it's not directed to the board member who's here, but the board members are great. A couple of them will post a summary of the board meeting and what I did last week, it was a comment about remote learners and basically said, we chose remote learning as a convenience. Well, let me tell you, it's remote learning with a child with an IEP and a 16-year-old boy is anything but convenient. He, you know, I had him home for medical reasons and other reasons. He revisited every six weeks. I was going to send him this current six weeks. We had him with my daughter at college in Florida. I asked if he could do one week remote and go back and I didn't hear back, but I understand there's a lot going on. It was fine. They helped, you know. But my issue is TEAs such as remote learners can participate in extracurricular. If they cannot, if the district cannot accommodate that, then we should have been told prior to choosing classes. So last June, you know, we were told students can participate in remote and participate in extracurriculars. So when we planned my son's schedule, he's continuing to be a football film. He's in mainstream TV, which can be done in or out. And, you know, he, he's home because of his medical issues. He just let his sister go through a really, my daughter ended up being home now, a really bad bout of COVID, which ended her up in the hospital, so now he's even more freaked to help. There's a big difference between a classroom with 30-plus students in it, a hallway, a packed hallway, a lunchroom, then, and I understand what you're saying, and then trying to reconcile an activity. But for him, he sees that classroom as a danger zone for him and a huge anxiety. The lunchroom, the hallways, but being in the end zone, you know, with that end zone camera gives him so much joy and he feels so safe and, you know, or whether it be a theater student that's only on a stage with 10 children or, I don't know, band, and I see them, they're like yards apart. So I understand every extracurricular choice is different.
Yes.
But, and I realize there's no one-size-fits-all, but being remote is something that we, it's been a difficult choice and we revisit it all the time, but what's helped him is that he knows he can still be a part of football filming and he's safe. He wears that mask all the time and even if he has to be on the bus with the trainers, he sits by himself and he's with his mask. And I just, it is really upsetting that we have to make a choice between his mental health and, trust me, being in-person is really where I want him to be.
Sure.
I've been teaching, you know, studying at Lake Creek for the last two days and I enjoy being back there. And I even miss studying because I'm home monitoring him. But if I have to choose between his mental health and what he's going to feel good about and then I have to take away that joy of filming and then, so that piece, so I really would love for you to think about that and reconsider that. I realize the application is going to be a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
But the team, and I would hope, and I'm giving you the credit, I would hope you consult with the schools because you don't know my son.
Yes.
You don't know me. Mr. Eaton knows my son, Mr. Reese, Patrick's teachers know him. We are, and his teachers have been, with the exception of maybe one, constantly in communication with us, whether it's phone calls, Zooms, they are so responsive, so I cannot say.
Great.
So it just really hurt my feelings and I know it hurts others when this board member accused us of choosing remote learning as a convenience.
Exactly.
Because, and I know, and maybe he didn't mean it the way it came out, but, and I know that there are children that are choosing remote learning for convenience. I don't know them personally, but I just, you know, heard that there are some. But I don't feel my child, or maybe your child, I don't know, should be punished for those children who are abusing, who are logging in, logging their attendance, and going back to bed or going on vacation. I just, I don't feel that our students who are making the grades, who are, my son's putting in, and he's probably putting in more hours this year than he ever has, partially because I'm on him. I just don't feel that they should be punished for those children who are logging in, going back to bed, but, oh, I can go play football or I can go play soccer. So I really would like the district to think about that and really try not, you said you were going to take those applications by case-by-case.
Yes.
That I really hope, you know, that you do take it case-by-case and look at these children and consult with their teachers or their administrators as to what type of student they are and how they're doing in school. Because that's, I guess, this is, that's the one thing that's kept him holding on with being remote, is that he can go in after school, even if it's two days a week, just to film a football game.
Perfect.
Or read it with Mr. Shindell.
Got it.
And I really appreciate not only that you're bringing up the issue, but the way you're bringing up the stories, the personal, that's why we have these opportunities to listen and learn and we're a public education system because we make better decisions when we're engaging the public constantly. Let me first of all start off, the, for our remote participants, the focus of the question concern is around the decision of the district for the second semester to ask for MISD activities that have some element of close contact. If a student is currently on remote and exercising the opportunity to participate in MISD activities with close contact, to consider coming back for in-person instruction second semester if they're continuing with that activity. Couple of things, let me start off with, there are many districts across the state of Texas that have made a decision to just stop remote learning. And it's just easier to say, not doing it anymore, come on back or choose to do something else. As a superintendent with my staff, that would make things infinitely easier on us. We have a board led by our board president and our vice president who's here tonight, who have challenged us to be the premier school district in the state of Texas and to serve every student. And for this year, that means the students choosing in-person and those choosing remote. And so I will simply say, if you read the litany of postings by that particular board member, it is about that focus and it's about being proud of the district and our board allowing us to create the options and not be one of those districts that's going for what's easy, but for going what's harder to serve your children better. If there was any wording that was at all taken by offense, I can assure you that was not the intent, but as a board member, as I'm sure Mr. Simmons will tell you, you hear about those outliers, okay? And so you hear about the, and these are true, about people doing gymnastics, doing golf schedules that are conducive for the child to play golf more than it is about the remote experience. We've had to have conversations where we've had to contact families and say, we're going to have to quarantine your child for 14 days. And while we don't reveal who they had close contact with. contact with, it's a small community, as I say about Montgomery, everybody's three degrees of separation for someone, and so all of a sudden, you find out that, wait a second, my choice to send my child and their choice to be in-person has now been impacted by somebody that's on remote instruction, but they're participating either in a community activity or a school activity where there's close contact. And from the flip side, that's hard to reconcile as well. And so, in looking at all of these things, what we wanted to do was not to make it be punitive, and we really worked on the language. Where's Sonia, our director of communications right now? Before we sent the letter that I sent on Friday evening, we must have wordsmithed that 15 times because we didn't want that portion to sound punitive, but really, this is what we're trying to do. And that is, when we first offered remote instruction for first semester, there were no restrictions. You could choose remote, you could do MISD activities. TEA has actually given us flexibility now to not have to, where we can make the changes that we've made. We didn't want to do a situation where it's just a, you know, blank slate, you know? If you're going to be in-person, you can do MISD activities. If you're going to choose remote, you have to come back. What we wanted to do was, first of all, separate activities that could be done remotely are not impacted. So, as Ms. Graves said, National Honor Society, Spanish, there's even some things like theater that you can do remotely, so those aren't impacted at all. It's really MISD activities that require some element of close contact to where you are physically, for lack of a better word, wrestling, okay? Wrestling is really hard to see how you're not having close contact and where your participation in wrestling is absolutely more problematic than sitting in a classroom, okay? Now, that's not all activities, which is why we have on the application of intent for you to tell us, I want my child to continue on remote, I would like to still allow them to participate in these activities. Our goal, our desire is to try to get to yes. It's not to be punitive, it's not to, you know, I have another saying, don't go for the easy no, go for the harder yes, okay? Because we want to get to yes, but we just want to be thoughtful about it, and we just want to make sure that we're not having to be in that classroom or a meeting with a parent who's like, okay, school district, explain to me why somebody can do contact sports and then get sick and then have a situation where my child got exposed to them at school, and then they're having to be quarantined actually longer than the student who got sick. That's a hard conversation. Now, we don't ever acknowledge the student that they think was the person who testified, but again, more often than not, they probably have it right, and that's just a hard conversation. So, we're trying to think about everybody's needs, but at the end of the day, if you have a legitimate issue, and it could even be where you're having a close-contact situation with the activity, you're still asking for the consideration, but there's something specifically in your household with a medical issue, or there's something where you have a suggestion in terms of how it's not an either-or, it could be a both-and, and that's why those meetings are really, really important. And to your question of, we will not make these decisions here in absence of the schools, we're just trying to take some of the pressure off the schools. So, the application will come in, we'll review with the administrator, teachers if necessary, and then that will help us with the decision. That's the same way that things are working right now. They tell us about close contact, quarantining, when teachers are asking to continue to work remotely, when they might be impacted. We make the decision based off the recommendation of the campus.
Can you mount that your, sorry, that your decision based on your contact tracing that the virus has come from kids who are remote, that were participating in extracurricular activities and bringing them in? But we have a risk of children who are in remote, but choose to because they're children participating in athletics, but don't want exposure within classrooms and the hallways and the lunch lines that are not social distance, but are okay with them being in a classroom because they don't want them to be, have an overexposure of, maybe.
Yeah. So, our rules and regulations are set forth by TEA in terms of contact tracing, and the reality is you don't ever know who, you know, how a person got COVID. You can't necessarily say, oh, it was that activity and it was being exposed to that person. That's not actually what we have to do, and I'm glad we don't. What we do have to do, though, is once we find out that someone tested positive, whether it's a student or adult on campus, or one of our employees, then we have to say, who met the definition of close contact? And we have had situations where we have had people who contracted COVID through a community, that are remote learners, but the close contact came because of their participation in MISD activity. So, that's how, it's not about where they got it, it's about, once we find out that a person got the virus, then we have to then say, who was in close contact? And so, the challenging part is exactly what I said earlier. When it's somebody that is remote, but they're on campus for an in-person activity, that's where we get to be, that's where we have to do the contact tracing and the quarantining, and that's the part that is challenging, not, again, that we would ever, and we would not, please understand that. We would not tell any parent, yes, your child has to be quarantined because a student being served on, that's not even important for us to, but then, we get the calls back once they, they start doing their own investigation, get on Facebook, make phone calls, and we would never acknowledge whether or not that's the issue. We'd just say, look, there was close contact. We're not going to tell you who and how, but that's the challenge, where then, when they say, well, do you have situations where people are participating in a close-contact activity but being served with remote? Well, yes, the answer to that is yes, but we're not going to acknowledge the name or identity of the student. Yes?
Hi. My name is Karina. I'm a clinical pharmacist and assistant professor in pharmacy school, and I have a sister who is a freshman in high school, so I get to see both sides as a student and as an assistant professor who is remotely teaching up to 90 students. I wanted to share some of our stories and also some concern, we do share some of the concerns with the activity. My sister has been going to practice in golf over the summer for about six or seven hours a day, and then she wanted to get into the team, so she really worked hard during the summertime to be able to get to the team, and then now she's in the team, but she's, she's afraid that she might be taken away because she's a remote learner right now. And so, we can't really say that, you know, someone who is playing golf is the same thing as like being in an indoor situation, being in a bus, in a, in a classroom that might be, you know, more cramped, and of course, being outdoors is, the risk of contracting COVID-19 is much less compared to when you are indoors. So, we would like to also ask if you can reconsider having certain activities where it's outdoors and having less risk for contracting COVID-19, to be able to have those students still continue to remotely learn. So, that's one thing. The second thing that we wanted to suggest or actually comment on was first acknowledging that how difficult it is for the teachers to teach remotely, but also for the students. My sister is doing this asynchronously, which is much difficult compared to synchronously. I teach my students synchronously, so everyone joins through Blackboard, and I teach them, and they get to ask their questions at the same time. The issue is with asynchronous, my sister, she only gets assignments, or she might get like a short 10-minute video, and she gets an assignment, and she comes and asks me, how do I do this assignment? And I tell her, well, why don't you go and watch your videos? Your instructor should have given you more instructions, or the answer must be in the video. And she says, well, no, it's not there because it's just a short video, and every time I email my teacher, it takes them more than 24 hours to respond. And so, the issue is that they may get an assignment in the morning, and they say, okay, we need to submit this at the end of today or tomorrow, and the teachers have 24 hours to respond, but that doesn't necessarily happen, right? So, asking the students to give you an assignment less than 24 hours when they don't even, they might not have time to respond to their questions or clarifications, is really putting the students at a disadvantage. So, and I do understand that teachers might not have enough time to respond to emails, and it's a big ask for teachers to respond to emails after work hours. I do that, I, sometimes I'm answering emails until like 12 at night, but I understand people have different responsibilities, and that might not be possible. But at least for the teachers to give the students more time, if they are asking the remote learners, that's one consideration. And then I do understand with, you know, having, not having enough equipments for synchronous learning, we can think of things that might not necessarily ask a lot of funding for, like having, if every teacher might have a laptop on and allowing the students to join in through Zoom, that way, the students that are remotely learning, they can ask their questions at the same time and be able to listen in for the explanations that the teachers are giving, because really, the students are at a disadvantage when they're learning, they're sleeping.
Appreciate that. And Dwayne, I don't know if there's anything you would like, I'll start it, but you have your microphone. Just for the audience, there was a request to not just have a blanket response to the MISD activities and remote learning. So, for example, activities like golf that are outdoor activities where there might be more spacing, could there be considerations? And again, that's why on the application of intent, it says, make the request, and that way, we were, you know, our goal is to try to get to yes, we don't want to just say no. It's just really trying to make sure that we're being thoughtful about things that could impact the health of students who are in-person and balance the needs of our remote learners. So, absolutely, we will look at everything and not just have, and even if there's an activity, if we say, well, this activity, for example, I've mentioned wrestling, it doesn't mean that anyone who makes a request for wrestling is automatically going to be a no, we just have to work our way through it, and how can we meet the need of that remote learner and still allow them to participate? And if there's a way that we're not thinking, or if there's a way we can structure it, we'd like to try to get to yes. But, you know, again, that's going to require us thinking out of the box, parents thinking out of the box, administrators and teachers thinking out, and we will get there. The asynchronous, you know, I'm married to a English teacher who's by far the better educator, I promise you, and she teaches all virtual classes. So, she teaches, you know, synchronous, but she's teaching everyone at the same time remotely. It is the hybrid schedule. It's having the class period where you've got 20 kids in front of you and five that are remote. That is really, really the challenge. And so, again, it's the challenge that we have to solve for. I wish I could tell you that our technology infrastructure was better than it currently is. We're working hard at it. We got 2,000 computers that we ordered. We hope that they would be here in October. We just found it today. They're not coming until December the 31st. And if you, I'm actually questioning December 31st because if you believe we're going to get 2,000 computers, you know, several days after Christmas, who knows? But that's what we're being told, and, and so, we're trying to get what we need to do this better, but for right now, we have what we have, and we're trying to make it work. I definitely think in terms of the, what you're saying about the, the request for the teacher, you know, they, we want, we have teachers who are trying to, it's not that they're pinned down to work hours, but we were having situations where some, not all, but some of our remote learners were wanting tests a week later, that they were thinking it was okay to turn and work four or five days after the same assignment was given to the in-person, and so that was, we were starting to get the other side of this, which is, should, do I have to have my child on remote because it sounds like they're getting more considerations than the, than the in-person? So, trying to make it equitable, not equal, but equitable was really some of this. Dwayne, what did I miss?
I feel like, I can't get this mask off, so I feel like, I feel like we're, like, every answer I give, I'm making excuses, but there's, this is, we're, the remote experience isn't synchronous, and it's, and it's not the same as being in class, it's just not. I wish I could stand up here and tell you that it's the same and everybody should, I can't imagine, if I'm in AP Physics, how I'm doing AP Physics at home remotely. It's, it's very, it's just different, and we knew we were, had a possibility to go virtual, but it's like, we order computers and they don't get here till December 31st. It's like the whole world, all of us in Texas are struggling, and the US are struggling getting the resources and training teachers. We, we didn't do any of our normal in-service for the first 10 days of school. We gave them opportunities to learn how to do remote instruction. We're training them on Google Classroom. Every lesson, it's not like, oh, here's the worksheet for what we normally do, I've got to convert that worksheet into a format that will then load into Google Classroom. And so, the time aspect is really for a lot of that where, and we have, we are talking daily with teachers and with administrators to say, how can we make this better? But I don't have the answers for it all. I guarantee you, if we could do synchronous, it came down to what we're facing here is, we don't even have external microphones that we can hook up so that the class can hear when we're not standing over here. So, we do have teachers that have Zoom classrooms up in their room. The problem is, if they're working anywhere in the room and they're not tied to this computer, the Zoom classroom kids can't hear it. If they were totally remote students that they were teaching, I promise you, we, we could get a teacher to be in front of the, the screen and do it synchronously, but we don't have the resources for that because I, we don't have enough remote stu, and it's weird to say this, we don't have enough remote students. Say, I've got five calculus students that are remote, but I have 19 more that are in person. I don't have a period to set aside for those five kids that are synchronous, and I don't have a period for them to teach 19 kids in class because she's only allotted one period a day to teach calculus to 24 kids.
If they use, the teachers use microphones during their class, would that cause?
Well, we're, we're working on ordering more external microphones that we can hook up, and it would be like a mic that sits out and pick up the ambient noise in the room. But it's like anything else, the whole world's buying those microphones. So, you go to Amazon, you can't get a microphone here for six weeks, or, and if you try to buy 400 of them, good luck, you know? It's, we're, we've got ideas, we just have trouble procuring the ideas and the equipment that we need in order to turn that on. And so, it's just a struggle, and we realize it is, and we're working to get better. And like I said, every answer I give, I feel like I'm making an excuse for it, but we're really asked to do something that we were never designed to do. We were never really designed to do remote, and it's, it's, it's a struggle, but we're working, and we're trying to get better at it every day.
Yeah. And just, let me also say, everything you said, have you thought about? The answer is yes. At length, with multiple teachers, all trying to say, how could I do a better? Our teachers want to do a better job for their remote learners and still serve their in-person, so there's, but I'll say this, so please understand, when you said, have you, there isn't anything yet that you've, you've shared that we haven't tried to get to, and we have to do a better job. That means we have to get the necessary resources, we have to do the necessary training, you know, but I'm never going to, as no one up here is ever going to be anything but honest. And, and, you know, we're going to have to tell you where we're going to have to try to get better and what we're trying to do to get there. And a lot of it is resources that we're trying to get, just like every other school district and private industries are trying to get to. But that being said, when you ask the question, have you considered? I want to say two things about that. I hope the answer is yes, because that means we've been thinking about it, and we can say yes, and let me tell you where we're at with that. But it might be no, we haven't thought about that. That's a really cool idea, can you tell us more? We're a learning organization, so we want to learn. So, I don't want you to at all take that we're not, we're very humble about this, you know? When I've, I've led large school districts in my past, and you kind of come into it saying, hey, I've got this, I know how to open school, I know how to, you know, make sure we're getting kids on a bus and serve lunch. There's nothing this year that we haven't had to rethink in a world of COVID. And so, we approach this very humbly, and if you have ideas or suggestions, we absolutely want to hear them. It will make us better. Now, here's what I'd like to suggest. We're really excited about having so many people here, and our team up here has been answering questions for our remote participants so that their questions are getting answered too. So, let me make this deal for you. Feels like some people haven't had a chance to ask questions yet, and so, there's a lot of us, there's a lot of you, so let's do this. I'm going to... I'm going to take one more question and then what we can do is conclude the town hall. I'll introduce everyone that's available. And then that way, we can stick around and answer any specific question to have. If you, you know, basically got what you needed and you're like, gosh, I don't want to be rude and I don't want to just get up, then you don't have to feel bad about that. Although the World Series finished last night, so you can't rush home for that. American, what is it, The Voice, that was Monday and Tuesday. So we, we tried to make sure we weren't competing with anything really cool entertainment-wise, right? So one last question for everyone and then we're to be up. Yes, sir.
I have a child in both Lake Creek and Montgomery High Schools. And so I got a question for both of them.
Divided loyalties.
That's what it is. My daughter at Lake Creek, you know, first of all, are given up, they're in block instruction, which is not the most conducive form of instruction for a high school student. So that she's not getting the full time that she would have gotten in a normal environment. Understand that, it's different. Now she has a bubble period and now she has a later arrival, a balloon period. And now she has a late arrival. So it seems like in-student, in-person students are giving up a lot to accommodate 11% versus 88%. So I want to know, at what point are we going to stop taking away from the in-person students? Because that's what it seems like. They're getting, they're getting the shorter end of the stick. They have to be there on time. They have to take their tests in class on time. They have to turn in their work in class on time. So at what point do we say, okay, we can't do any more for the remote students? Because it's taking away from the in-person students.
The question was, how do we balance the unique needs of remote learners as well as our in-person learners? And then trying to address the needs of one group, not create challenging situations for the other. And again, this is, this is kind of the world we're in, where we can have a meeting where we're here. We're not doing enough to serve our remote learners. And there's probably a lot of truth to that. And then there's other meetings where we're here and trying to serve one group of students. We're putting another group of students at a disadvantage. Part of the guidelines, we're really trying to address some of that, which is where we were, we were literally having families say, look, I want my child in-person, but I feel like if they're going to be able to turn in assignments whenever they want, if they're going to be able to take their tests whenever they want, then I'm going to put them on remote because it feels like they're being disadvantaged. That was not the intent of the vast majority of people who were being served remotely. But again, because of a few folks who were taken advantage, that becomes the narrative. And, and so part of it, we just have to get the narrative out there. We want to serve each child that, whether they're served remotely or in-person to the best of our ability, and we want that standard to be excellent. And when it comes to the question of, how long are we going to do it? Part of the reason for doing the letter of intent for application for remote is to figure out how many students we're going to have. We have changed our, our strategy many times. We actually thought we were going to be doing a dedicated remote teacher on our secondary campuses. And it was going to be our elementary that we're going to be doing hybrid. We flipped that model because of how many students were being served and the ability to do each delivery system well. So at the end of the day, it's not so much the percentage. You know, we will be the premier school district in Texas, which our board has tasked us to be, when we are serving every child well. And so whether it's five students who need remote, 500 students who need remote, or 5,000, we're just going to have to adjust. What we don't want to do is to have you as a family choosing in-person that you're being impacted negatively because of families choosing remote. We don't want families choosing remote to feel like they're being penalized because they've made a decision that's good for their child. And that's a delicate balancing act. What I will say to you is, as we were thinking about the late arrival, it really was not so much about remote. It was really about our teachers feeling like they weren't being able to get to their families. So I'm a teacher. I want to contact four parents. Two are parents being served remotely, two are parents being served in-person. It was really about their lack of time. It was about their need to adjust the block schedule. And so really, that was the desire for late arrival. It's a pilot. And so it may be possible where we stop it at December 9th. It could be where we continue with the pilot, but we don't do the 32 block. We're good, subject to change is not just what we say to be catchy. It's because we have to adjust and we have to listen and we have to have a good strategy for the needs as we meet them.
The other part of the question for my son who's at Montgomery. He's a senior. This is a very important semester for him.
Absolutely.
The one that's going to go up in front of all of his college applications. He's, does well in his, in his class. And the kids that are remote are not held when they're testing. You cannot ensure that they're not getting outside help when they're testing at home. So are they at an advantage for grades and the upping of their scores against the kids who are in-person and are being watched and are making sure?
Are their parents doing it for them? You know, we said work independently, independently. Then we are like, what's going on?
Look, the reality is, you know, that wording was basically to make a request that while we want parents to be the child's first teachers and we want our parents to be partners in the education, that doesn't mean doing the work for them. And let me just say, we've sat down and looked at some elementary work where, I mean, there's, I have a PhD and there were words I didn't recognize in a second grade reading assignment. Now, I'm not the smartest person in the room, but Ms. Graves is. And even she, sometimes we'd look at it and say, what does that mean? So, look, I think, I always try to make, the people are of good intent. But there are always people who will try to advantage the system to advantage their child. And we don't want to reward that or disadvantage students who are trying to do things the right way. So we just have to put guidelines out. We have to, you know, follow up if we suspect that somebody is trying to take advantage. Mr. McFadden has been working with our secondary campuses where we are asking for families to come in, even remote learners to take tests, to do things that will not create a disparate, you know, set of expectations. It's not going to be perfect. And so part of this is just asking people to set the right example for our children. And if you, again, you know, but I can't tell you it's not happening. I can't tell you I believe it's happening at scale. But, you know, please continue to work with us. Contact your campus principals if you suspect that there's an issue. And we will investigate it and we will deal with it. But, you know, it's like everything else. I spent a little time in the private sector and it was amazing to me when the conditions changed, some people, how quickly some organizations changed and they took advantage of the situations, doing things really, really ethically. And others did them not so ethically. And you don't want bad behavior to be rewarded. I think that's the bottom line. So I said one last question, but this gentleman over here shot his hand up. So I'm going to give you the last word with all of us and then we're going to personalize this.
I know you said you wanted to wrap this up. I just wanted to make sure that people understand that the decision for us, for some of us to keep our kids remote really wasn't a choice. For some of us, we're pigeonholed into this situation because of health reasons and that kind of thing. So, you know, when, when people say, well, you're choosing to keep your child home because it's the easy route, that kind of thing. And that's really not the case. It's just as difficult for, for those of us who are just parents of kids at home. We're trying to balance everything out too. So, you know, we're, we're, there are those of us who are trying to follow the rules and, and are doing the best that we can. We're not trying to take advantage of the situation. So, you know, don't throw the baby out of the bath water is my main point. Because it's, it's just, it's not fair to anyone, whether you're, you're in-person or remote. It's just, it's just a situation that it stinks for everyone.
That's my quote of the night. It does, it stinks forever. And, you know, it's, I was in an airport, actually flying down here and I heard these two people in front of me and there was a program on and they were, a young lady was complaining about losing her prom and losing senior awards. And, and they were like, oh, what a baby, you know? I mean, people are dying. And I was like, wait a second, you know, people deal with a loss. And for that young lady, I mean, your high school prom is special. Your senior awards night is special. Your graduation is special. And they're never going to get that back, okay? And, and so, you know, this, it's unfair, it's unwanted, and we're all having to deal with it. So what I will say is, we absolutely are offering remote because our board has challenged us to be the premier school district in Texas. That's not a branding thing. And when people ask me really what it means is, we're be the premier school district in Texas when we are serving every student, even after a world of COVID exceptionally well. And in a school district our size with the resources we have and a community support, we should be able to do that. So we find ourselves at a little bit of a disadvantage because our technology infrastructure did not start where we would have liked it to be. We, like every other school district across the United States, did not train our teachers to learn how to be remote teachers. We were teaching them how to be better digital educators in the classroom, but it never occurred to any school district that you need to teach them how to be remote learners the way that a lot of our higher education campuses have been doing that training for a long time. I choose to accept our families are making the best decision for their children. Those send them in-person and those choosing remote. And we want you to hear, it's our honor and it's our privilege and it's our desire to serve your children well. We're do it better when you tell us what we're doing well. And we appreciate the, the compliments that started. And we appreciate every situation where you say, look, I know everyone's working hard, but still not meeting our needs. Let's figure it out together. And that's why we had these meetings, because it helps us. And I promise you, tomorrow, this team working, we'll be hard at work saying, hey, this was suggested, that was, what about that suggestion? And we're going to work on this and try to get it to be better and better and better. So yeah, it stinks, but there's, there's a portion of this where we say this all the time. We just ask for a little grace because we're all trying to figure it out and we will. But please know, we will figure it out better, listening and learning from you. So with that, thanks to our remote participants. And if you still have questions, please get them in. I'm going to do a real quick introduction so that we're spread out across the cafeteria. Well, I guess we should call it, used to be a cafeteria, right, Ms. Graves? But it's our, it's our auditorium. So we have Meredith Berg, who is in charge of our special education in 504. Dwayne McFadden, who is in charge of secondary education. Wendy Graves in charge of elementary instruction. Amy Busby, boy, she wears so many hats. But technology, health and, and student support services. Trying to think of anything else that would be for this audience. What's that? G T, she just wears a lot of hats. Sonya Lopez, who is both our Director of Communications currently and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Chris Lynn, who is our CFO. Bobby Morris, former principal of Montgomery High School and our Chief Operating Officer. And Adam Simmons, who is our Board of Education Vice Chair. And Adam Dennison sitting back there, who's actually our Interim Assistant Director of Technology. So there's lots of folks. We want to make sure that if you have questions, issues, concerns, we're being responsive. I'm Heath Morrison. I'm a teacher on special assignment, so if I can be of service, just let me know. Thank you for being here tonight. We're spread out and would love to be able to make sure we're making your needs and hearing what you have to say. Thank you for being here and thanks for giving us the honor of serving your children.